Personnel Human Services will come to order, please. Your call?
Ryder.
Here.
Durant.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes, sir.
McGee.
Here.
Lux.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. We have the minutes of November 20th.
Wishing to approve as presented.
Support. It's been moved and approved. All those in favor signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign carried. Public input. Anyone wishing to address Personnel Human Services can do so at this time. Just state your name.
My name's Michael Hartman. I'm Assistant Manager of Carly Gross Airport. And I put together a letter of request to get on the agenda for the January 8th meeting to discuss an ordinance that we're trying to get passed through the townships for tall structures. And in my letter of request is spelled out what I would like help from the commission for. Everyone has this copy.
Sure.
And if you have an opportunity to look at it, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Commissioner Durant.
I have a question for you, Mr. Hartman. Pinconning Township is going to make a move on their passing or not passing on this? Is that going to be before or after your presentation?
I've talked with all four townships that's involved in the airspace that the Tall Structures Act covers. That would be Fraser, Garfield, Mount Forest, and Pinconning. I've approached Pinconning especially. They would be our host ordinance folks. I've also talked with commissioners in the other three townships. They are mostly in favor of adopting whatever Pinconning does. Right now, the ordinance request has been put on hold at Pinconning and for some further evaluation. So that process is underway, sorta. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Grant.
I have really had an opportunity, first time I've seen this. So what are you actually trying to do? Or what are your requests?
Well, the request initially is to get on the agenda for the next meeting, but...
Here?
Yes. So, you know, it's a letter of request to get on the agenda. And the subject area that we need to cover is spelled out here, but I'll give you a brief. Briefly, what it is, is in order for the airport to be able to manage the airspace above them, they have to have some authority, and that authority comes from you commissioners. The process, as I understand it, is that the commissioners need to appoint the zoning, the airport zoning committee. This has to do strictly with Carly Gross Airport. That's the only function that these people have. I've listed a group of people on the bottom of that request as the folks that we need to have on the commission. This group of people was appointed by Carly Gross Airport Incorporated. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(4). We manage the airport. We own the airport. It's a public use airport. We finance the airport. We take care of everything there. Our president, Mike Cleely, appointed this group of people as the zoning committee for the airport. And that's fine for our corporation, but in order to have any powers at all to manage the airspace around our airport, that authority comes from you guys. And that's the crutch of the whole thing.
There's an existing airport there now?
Yes. The airport's been there for 49 years, serving the Pinconning community. Next year is our 50th year.
Who gave you the authority to manage that airspace?
The FAA has given us authority to manage airspace directly around the airport. And the zoning ordinance gives the folks at Pinconning the knowledge to be able to manage what happens as far as construction around the airport. Previously there, and still, there's not a zoning ordinance for Carly Gross Airport.
Now, are you going to do construction? Is that what you're...
The construction happens all around the area. This is for tall structures. Tall structures is defined as, you know, many, many different things. So, we had cell phone towers built and protruding up into our airspace only because the local people had no knowledge of what this airspace protection is from the FAA. And that's what I'm trying to get across to them in the zoning ordinance, to make them aware of what the regulations are from our federal government. They had no knowledge of it, still don't, because they don't have an ordinance. And those kind of things are developed in an ordinance and gives them also the ability to say yes to a permit or say no to a permit, depending on where it is and where it's located.
So, putting it on an agenda here is going to do what for you?
Well, hopefully, what it will do for me is you folks will appoint this group of people as Carly Gross zoning committee, okay? And when you do that, then we then can work with our local government, Pinconning Township, help them understand what the regulations are. Also, one of the primary functions of this group is when a permit is issued somewhere around the airport, someone has to go locate it by GPS, have to take a look at the permit of the height of the structure, and take a look at our airspace requirements and say, yes, this meets the federal guidelines, or no, it don't. And tell our local zoning people that we recommend that you don't issue this permit, and here's the reasons why. So that's basically what the ordinance does, but without authority from you guys, we have none.
Commissioner Krieger.
So, if you do me a favor, you want to give us the address of the location of the airport? People watching may not know where this airport's located.
The airport's located on Fraser Road between Pinconning Road and Newman Road, halfway in between. It extends from Fraser Road almost to the expressway. It's an east-west strip. We have 2,500, a little more than 2,500 feet designated as a runway right now. We also have 1,100-foot overrun that we will in the future designate as additional runway. So, that's an expansion thing. We own that property. The overrun is maintained mode, snow plowed, and it's, you know, it's an emergency overrun, usable now, but designated as an extension to the length of the runway is something that we need to do with the Michigan Department of Transportation down the road.
How many planes are stored on that site?
We got about 23 planes on the airport.
So, there's a lot of activity.
I wish there was more, but yes, you can say that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Executive Barcia.
Yes. Mike, Mr. Hartman, I appreciated you stopping by to talk a little bit about this. As I indicated, this would be a matter for the commission to decide. Have you, and we talked a little bit about the FAA rules on like a five-mile radius relative to the height of the structures. If you could expand on that. Have you talked to any of the surrounding townships? And would this encroach, do you think, on their ability to govern at the grassroots level if, you know, if they had a disagreement with the airport, commissions, determination on a structure? I know wind turbines comes up a lot because they're 500 feet tall. But you mentioned in our meeting that maybe even the McDonald's sign on Pinconning Road?
Yeah, there's two, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but there's two issues that we have run across, and they intrude into the airspace that is designated by the FAA. And that airspace in that particular area is 150 feet above the ground. The McDonald's sign is about 162 feet. So, it's an intrusion. The bigger intrusion is a cell phone tower. It is 198 feet high, so it intrudes into airspace by about 48 feet. The unfortunate thing about the cell phone tower is it's right in our traffic pattern. So, we have to be careful to avoid that. The other unfortunate thing about that tower is it don't have anti-collision lights on it, so at night you can't see it. So, there's a couple of issues that have happened, and they have happened primarily because we haven't had a zoning ordinance that helps the people in Pinconning Township say, yes, you can put something here, it has these restrictions, and, you know, they have no knowledge of this kind of thing. And that's not their fault. It's primarily the airport's fault, because we went over beaten on our door 10 years ago when we got this drawing. We should have been, but we didn't. Since these issues have come up with these two violations, we've finally woken up and said, we need to get an ordinance passed to help these folks out. We need to get some authority to also to help these folks out.
Just as a follow-up, five miles, I was under the impression it's for a larger airport, handling larger aircraft. Is the space, the radius around the airport you're referring to, is that for, I mean, what's the, you have a relatively short airstrip there. Typically, is it four-seater, six-seater aircraft, or, I mean, obviously, you couldn't land a big jet airliner there. But is the five-mile radius, is that here toward a larger airport handling, you know, longer and, you know, more seating capacity aircraft than the typical kind of aircraft I've seen? I've been out to the Pinconning Airport many times, and it seems like two or four-seaters are the max.
Well, as an example, and I've downloaded and printed the zoning ordinance that Tuscola County did for their Carroll Airport. And their dimensions are 10 miles, okay? And that would be five miles from the end of the runway, either direction. I've developed a drawing that says it's 4.2 miles, so it's a little bit smaller. The FAA drawing was developed because of the NTSB studies, accident reports, and they do some conclusions about, you know, like accidents and what causes them. And they commissioned studies. One of the studies that was commissioned was from the California University at Berkeley. And that particular study developed these diagrams that the FAA, through the states, put out to all airports, including ours. Those drawings came out in 2010. Another study was done by the NTSB for accidents that have happened with windmills around airport areas. And that study points out also at least a seven mile. So, there's issues out there, or reports out there that have recommendations. The FAA is restricted from doing anything as far as regulations. Their restriction to only monitoring where towers get built, windsmills get built, power plants, smoke tech get built, whatever you call a tall structure, and it can even be a tree, and has been. At the end of the runway, they got too tall, and we had to cut one down because of that. We get inspected, all airports do, once a year. We get relicensed at those points. If there's a safety issue that's not resolved, we won't be relicensed. So, the ability to lose the airport is there. The drawing that they did was a safety drawing that's directly involved with the airport property and some small extension outside the property, developed from these safety studies that, for instance, University of California did. And that's the basis of where these drawings came from. Those drawings, I've demonstrated to Jim, and I've demonstrated to all four townships that they're inadequate. What happens with those drawings is the outer limit is set fairly close to the airport. And Fraser Township in particular has in their ordinance that they're limited to 499 feet height in their township for structures. That's a part of another ordinance. What that does is at the limits of the FAA drawing, that puts a tower, you could legally put a tower there, and that's like 1.3 miles off the end of the runway. And 499 feet high happens to coincide exactly with our glide slope to the runway. Glide slopes are specified by the FAA. They use them, for example, at instrument approach systems at MBS Airport. But, you know, it's a standard, it's what we get trained to. If you would put a tower there, whatever, 499 feet high, we, by FAA regulations, have to clear that by 500 feet. That's our rules from the FAA. We have to stay 500 feet away from structures, people, buildings. So, wherever the building is, we must be 500 feet above it, or whatever the structure is. What that does to our airport is it turns our glide slope from a three-degree glide slope to a six-degree glide slope. And a six-degree glide slope is impossible to get down to the runway in that short distance. That's why we have to expand the area for these ordinances, so that when someone wants to build a structure that high, we've got enough room to absorb that problem. So, that's the reason for the 4.2 miles that I designated. And that comes from not just me, but from several other studies. I think that answers your question now.
Through the chamber, have you talked to the three townships involved around the airport?
Yes, I have. I've talked to the three townships around, at least twice. I have submitted drawings to them of the airspace that we require in their township, and I submitted to them the height obstacle in that area, so that the townships are aware.
What was their reaction?
Reactions from two of the townships were very positive. They told me that if your host township passes this ordinance, we will sign on. So, that's two of the townships. One of the townships, I'm not sure where they're going. But the biggest problem is, is that our host township has tabled this issue for now, and that don't bode well for the progress of this ordinance. And I think you guys understand, is if we don't get this ordinance, we could very likely lose that airport, and it's been there for almost 50 years. Any other questions?
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Anyone else wishing to address us today?
Keith Markstrom. I realize this is not the full commission meeting, but I didn't want to wait till next month or next year. There's two quick things. One is, we met with the Michigan DEQ who appropriated a second grant for remediation of asbestos at the building site at 1009 North Madison. So, that's a total of about $110,000 for soil contamination removal and for the asbestos in the building, which will essentially gut that building down with studs. But the real reason I'm here is an apology to this body, at least the personnel here, for not stepping up last week and speaking after the public hearing, when you were a bit chastised by one of our colleagues with regard to not supporting veterans. And I was remiss by not getting up and saying, there's no better support than has been extended by anybody than this county, the commission, the staff, everybody involved, as well as the city of Bay City. So, I should have stood up and countered some of the challenges and charges and allegations, but I just want to take this opportunity. You all do a fine job in supporting our veteran community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the...
And I support the sheriff's recommendation for additional cars on the road. Bob can find the money.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing no other public input, we'll move on to petitions and communications from the prosecutor. A legal stenographer, a vacancy, what is your pleasure?
Some move.
Support.
Then move and support at any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From the Assistant Corporate Counsel, retirement ordinances. We have, one, a rescission of Resolution Number 90151, process for purchase of military service credit. What is your pleasure?
Some move.
Support.
Then move and support at any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. A waiver of board rules to expedite adoption of the amendment to the Bay County Employees' Retirement System Ordinance. What is your pleasure? Support. Then move and support at any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. Under three, Bay County Employees Retirement System Ordinance Amendment.
Some move.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. Under C, Retirement Administrator Military Service Time, Bruce Manico. What is your pleasure?
Some move.
Then moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From Corporate Counsel, Amendment to Elevator Maintenance Contract.
Some move.
Support.
Then moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From the Director of Recreation Facilities, Adoption of the 2019-2023 Five-Year Recreation Plan. What is your pleasure?
Some move.
Support.
Then moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From Personnel Director, vacancies, new positions. Sheriff's Department, Food Service Team Leader. What is your pleasure?
Support.
Then move and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From the Department on Aging, In-Home Service Worker, part-time. What is your pleasure?
Support.
Move and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. Animal Control, Custodian, Kennel Attendant, part-time. What is your pleasure?
Some move.
Support.
Move and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. Under two, Sheriff Roboto Deputies, two full-time. What is your pleasure?
Some move.
Support.
Then move and supported, any discussion? Commissioner Coonan.
Just so I know, there was another one that was, another position that was funded, and we approved, right? Now, these two, do we know how much is coming from the general fund for these two positions? Do we know how much money will be coming from fund balance?
Mr. Evans, do you have an idea on that?
The one is going to be total general fund, $64,000, approximately $64,000. The second one, if you approve the agreement with friend of the court, of course, we'll have the second one totally funded, so we'll be just getting $64,000 on the general fund.
And there is an agreement with the courts?
One of the deputies is Frank Lussin-Callum. The other deputy, the other two deputies are general, I believe, right? And we managed to come up with the funds, non-general fund funds, to pay for the second one, so that means the third one is going to be totally general fund line.
So, okay. And I guess I'm not quite sure what's going on with the courts. Can you give a quick explanation?
Well, the friend of the court currently pays two-thirds of a deputy for a warrant appeal. I've talked with them, and for two years, they will allow funds to come on, their fund balance in the 215 fund that we can't touch. They've agreed to, they can, by law, they can, you know, give it to you once and maybe twice, and I don't know, we'll do the third year, that'll have to come on the general fund, for marijuana money if it comes in. I think the earliest we'll get any of the excise tax from marijuana will be later, 2019.
Thanks, Bob. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. Under G, from the Environmental Health Manager, grant subaward agreements with Amalgam LLC and the University of Michigan.
Some move.
Support.
Then move and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From the Director of Department on Aging, Memorandum of Understanding with Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency. What is your pleasure?
Some move.
Support.
Then move and support at any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. From the Office of Assigned Counsel, the October 2018 report.
Received.
Support.
Has been moved and supported to receive. All in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, carried. Are there any referrals? Seeing none. Unfinished business? None true business? None miscellaneous? Yes. Commissioner McGee.
Just one thing. We had a new commissioner training in Franklinville, Michigan Association of Counties and MSU Extension, and they used the 2017 Bay County budget as a good example of a good budget. So, I just want to kudo to the finance, because the guy from MSU looked at all the different counties, and he picked Bay Counties out as a good budget, talked about budget stabilization.
Smart man.
Yeah? Deserve funds and all that good stuff, and so, just thanks for doing a good job on the budget.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Mr. McGee. Any other miscellaneous? Seeing none, any announcements?
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by the usual sign.
Aye.
Post same sign, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Bay County Commission. It is for 36, or thereabouts, on December 18th. Could you please take the roll?
Commissioner Durant.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
McGee.
Here.
O'Nan.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lux.
Here.
Harret.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon, thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. Lord, we ask again today for your help and direction to carry on and do the work that has been placed before them by their office. May your divine providence help them to benefit every citizen of this community. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to come forward and speak, please step forward now. We have a taker.
We do. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Professionals, everyone here. Good morning, good afternoon. Thank you. It's a late day on a Tuesday. I'd like to address, my name is Jan Minor and I'm the probate judge. And I'd like to address a few things and I'm sorry that Mr. Markstrom left. I was, I didn't know if I should speak during that time or this time since I'm somewhat not used to coming over to speaking to the full commission. But I chose to do it during the formal process instead of the committee meeting. I understand your meeting last time was a little bit spirited. Maybe would have been the correct word that I would use in regards to some things for our veterans. And I wanted to take this opportunity to maybe clear up some misunderstandings, some miscommunication and sort of, I guess, maybe educate a little bit on the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission and how that dovetails into maybe your new decision on creating the new board for the veterans. So I did want to take that, I think it's important that we look at the role of the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission, its relationship to the County Board of Commission and of course to the probate judge. And that's really why I'm here today. Because I believe that there's been somewhat of an impression that I as the probate judge and the probate judges before me for the last almost 100 years, I would assume, have some type of power and control over the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission and that quite frankly is not correct. So starting with the Soldiers and Sailors Relief, it is by statute an autonomous county body consisting of three honorably discharged veterans who are resident of our community, of our county. It is a public body and as with bodies with multiple members, should conduct business with a chairman, a secretary, and must make decisions by a majority vote upon matters within the scope of its statutory charge. This is essentially to evaluate the need and authorize the expenditure of funds for indignant veterans and their dependents. With the scope of that authority, the decisions of the commission are not subject to review by the probate judge or the commissioners. A veteran who disagrees with the determination of a need or an award made by the commission, the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission, is allowed to file an appeal to Circuit Court. So the only role of the probate judge under this statute is to appoint the members of the commission as openings occur. And that's it. These reasons that the probate judge was chosen by the legislature for this function are, I think, partly historical, but mostly importantly, more importantly, rooted in the basic checks and balances, separation of powers theory, which is of course the cornerstone of our democratic system. The preservation of autonomy, which can be provided by having the appointment power vested in an independent authority rather than the funding source, which would be you. Members of the commission, the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission, can be removed only for just cause, a legal standard which requires a minimum showing of actionable misconduct. And I guess I wanted to let you know exactly what the role is or of the judge and that I have only, at least for the next maybe few days, if you will, the power to appoint in regards to the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission. And that is where it stops, by statute. Now, the current situation from which we find ourselves is I understand that we had a person resign and that was Keith, who was just here. Unfortunately, when he sent his resignation and he sent it to the county commissioner's office, or excuse me, he sent it to the county executive's office and not to me. So I had no knowledge until much later after his resignation that he in fact actually had resigned. And then there was thought about how are we going to move forward? Are we going to move forward as a community, continuing the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission? Or as I understand, are you moving to the Department of Veterans Affairs? So if the commission, and I wasn't here last week because I was in court, commissioners as a whole determine, in fact, that is the way or the journey for our veterans is the creation of the Department of Veterans Affairs. If that in fact happens, then the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission will be no more. So I just wanted to place that on the record to clear up any kind of misunderstanding about the probate judge's role, how it works and what my authority is under the statute and what will happen, as I'm sure counsel has already told you, is that once if you decide or have already decided to create the new department, Soldiers and Sailors Relief will be no more. So thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before the board? Seeing no one, we're going into resolutions for consideration from the Personnel and Human Services Committee meeting that held just prior, Commissioner Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2018-295, Legal Stenographer vacancy. I will move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-296, decision of Resolution Number 90151. I will move.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-297, waiver of board rules to expedite adoption of amendment to Bay County Employees Retirement System Ordinance. I will move that.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-298, Bay County Employees Retirement System Ordinance Amendment, Pre-Purchase of Military Service Credit. I would move that resolution forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-299, Purchase of Military Service Time for Bruce Manico. I would move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-300, Amendment to Elevator Maintenance Contract. I would move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-301, Vacancies in the Sheriff's Department. I will move that forward.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-302, Grant Sub-Award Agreement with Amalgam, LCC and the University of Michigan. I will move that resolution forward.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-303, Memorandum of Understanding of Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency. I would move that resolution forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
That's all we have before you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryder. Next, is there any unfinished business? Under new business, I have a couple items. I have Resolution Number 218-304 for the Board of Commissioners.
So moved. Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Coonan.
Maybe the clerk can read this and from there then we can have a little bit of discussion on that. Actually, I was bringing this resolution forward. If you want me to read it, I can do that as well.
Could you read it?
Yep.
Resolution 2018-304, the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Michigan, Republican-dominated legislature is pushing forward measures aimed at hamstringing newly-elected state officials who will take office in January. Whereas Republicans have already sent legislation to Governor Snyder that would make it much harder for executive branch agencies to issue regulations that are stricter than federal ones, strip campaign finance regulation authority from newly-elected Democratic Secretary of State, give the legislature an unchallenged voice in lawsuits overseen by the newly-elected Democratic Attorney General, and prevent newly-elected officials from forcing nonprofit political advocacy groups to disclose who bankrolls their campaigns. Whereas the legislature's moves are unsettling to some members of both parties. And whereas the blatant misuse of power and the lame duck session will continue to drive a wedge between the elected officials in Lansing where ever should be underway to seek common ground in the representation of the citizens of Michigan, therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioner calls on Governor Snyder to veto any and all legislation that changes existing law pertaining to the duties of the governor, secretary of state and attorney general. And be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to Governor Snyder, the local state representatives and the other 82 Michigan counties. Sign Thomas Herrick, Chair and Board.
Discussion. Commissioner McGee.
Post. It's a lame duck session. It happens in lame duck sessions. Democrats have said that when they had the lame duck control. So it's nothing to do. I don't see anything wrong with any of these things that are mentioned here. The four, you know, the issues that are mentioned. So I'm sure the governor may have signed some of these bills already by the time we get our resolution down there because they're about to wind up. Possibly, it might go into next week, but he's not going to change his mind. But if you want to send it, that's what we'll roll on.
Doing nothing only gives the party that's in control the idea or the intent that everything is fine. And when you lose elections and you lose the majority and you still want to govern with the minority, as in this particular case, where they want to change the rules and allow and not give, you know, the executive branch, which would be the governor, the secretary of state and the attorney general, now all Democrats, the same opportunity they had to govern that the Republicans had is not right. So for us to do nothing, we just are more or less, you know, saying, hey, everything's fine. But I don't, in my perspective, if you see something wrong, you do something about it. We still have some time. We don't have a whole lot of time. But when we pass this today, Deanne can email and we can send a certified letter to Snyder. Just let him know that, you know, what they're doing isn't right. And people do not approve of it. So and what it's doing again, you get guys like this and you can't get anything done, you know, because he thinks it's fine because they did it in the past or what have you. But there is no real, in Lansing or even in Washington, there is no relationships anymore, you know. It's us against them, whoever in the majority. And we need to change that. If we're going to legislate for people, you know. Specifically, you look at here, we got a bunch of old guys. And we should be looking out for our kids and our grandkids. And we should be doing things that will enable those elected in Lansing, in this particular case, to do what's right for our kids and our grandkids. We cannot continue to go down this vein where nobody talks to anybody and we've got a narrow agenda and that's all in, for the majority, we're just going to focus on that narrow agenda. There is time and we can get this going and let them know down there that we don't approve it. And if we send this out to the other 82 counties, I'm sure we will get, because there is both, there's support on both sides of the party on this particular issue. So I thank you for your time.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. I don't know that a precedent's ever been set by a body of, let's say, Republicans or Democrats to try to handcuff the new incoming individuals taking over the office. So I certainly would and will be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Coonan, I just, I only want to ask a question because I'm just kind of curious. You know, we talk about, you know, the Republicans, the Democrats. Is it out of the ordinary to say that Michigan's legislature is pushing forward measures and that, you know, we know it's a Democrat, we know it's a Democrat that wants secretary of state and the attorney general and the governor. But I mean, do you, and this is your personal opinion. Do you feel that this is like the wedge that's there, does this make it wider? You know, to throw the wedge and say, just mentioning party names? Because the last part of it, you know, like the whereas, the blatant misuse of power, that's all true. I agree. But I'm just wondering about just using party names in the middle is my question.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure where you're coming from.
Well, and the first part is Michigan's Republican-dominated legislature. So.
That's a true state.
I mean, would it be better to say Michigan's legislature is pushing forward measures? You know, and they, and I mean, everybody knows who they, you know, who's doing it. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just kind of, I'm kind of thinking aloud since I got to, you know, we got this at kind of a late hour is all. You know, we did, you know, they hadn't had this for a couple of days to digest. And, you know, and we know that, that we have a Democrat, our secretary of state's a Democrat and the attorney general's a Democrat and the governor's a Democrat. I mean, do we need that in there is my question?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Amending?
Pardon me?
Amending this?
No, he's not amending it. He's comfortable with it. He's good. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
No.
Motion carries. Number two, Resolution 2018-305. This is for the. Do we need to read this or we get? Do we need to read this? Is everyone, is everyone familiar with 305? It's establishing the Department of Veterans Affairs.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all. Commissioner McGee.
Soldiers and sailors are going away, are going to be under a different part of the law. So that's eliminated then. So it's more, this body has control and doesn't take away from soldiers and sailors. And for what you said, people didn't understand what was going on with soldiers and sailors. It's an old law. They didn't know the probate judge appointed that for people. So they kept calling me and said, why are you guys doing that? I said, we didn't do it. They didn't do it. It was the soldiers and sailors that did whatever they did. So just want to clarify that.
Okay. Commissioner Lutz.
Question, Corporate Counsel. Okay. How does this affect our ability to collect the mileage funds and to expend them?
I will have to read that question and get the answer to you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-306. This is the MGT Consulting Group with the courts.
So.
So moved? You guys support? Okay, thank you. Discussion. Commissioner Lutz.
To Bob, I mean. Bob, these are the ones you were talking about for the deputies, correct?
Yep.
Right. Is there, is there, there's no dollar amount here? Do we need to specify a dollar amount or keep it?
Twenty-one thousand or a little more each year.
I mean, that's what we're looking for. I mean, do we have to specify any actual dollar amount in this resolution or?
That'll be in the first set of budget adjustments for the rest of the year. But it's around 21,000 a year.
Okay. I just asked.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Yeah, beautiful. Unless there's other new business. That's all, that's all new business from up here. And is there any miscellaneous? Any announcements? Commissioner Durancheck.
I wish everybody a nice Christmas and happy new year and good job to our administrative staff and county executive. We had a good year, better things to come.
Well said, because it's been, we've been pretty, I think we're pretty fortunate this year. We're off to here.
Yeah, I would just like to follow Commissioner Durancheck and thank the Board of Commissioners for what I think has been a productive year again and thank them for their dedication to their roles as the legislative branch of Bay County Government. I think we have achieved some things we can all be proud of. And also, Mr. Chairman, as you wind down, I know you might have a little, a little more time as the chair, but you've handled yourself very well and conducted very professional meetings in the chairman's role and in the chairman's seat. I want to thank you, Commissioner Herrick, Chairman Herrick, for your service to the board and to the people of Bay County and the administration.
Thank you.
And I wish everyone a joyous holiday and a. And I wish everyone a joyous holiday and a great new year.
All right, and I just want to take one second to thank, you know, everybody on the staff, and everybody I got to see, you know, at the health department and through the jail and through the county building, and, you know, everybody, people I've met on the, you know, that I didn't even know worked here that I, you know, when I was out campaigning and they, you know, I said, hey, we work for the county, and, you know, I got to see all these great people, and you all work hard, you know, it's, there's a little bit of love that goes in working for a government, as people like I know, and Commissioner Coonan knows, he was a government employee for a long time also, so, thanks again, thanks for all your help, you guys, you know, because, you know, and Deanne, couldn't do much without you, you're the show here, not me. Thanks again, that's all I had to say.